The Asheville Bunkham League of Women Voters presents the 2013 Asheville City Council Candidates Forum. Moderating the forum is WCQS News Director David Harant.
If you have a cellphone, please at least put it on silent. Make sure it's quiet, that would be very helpful. We have quite a crowd up here as you can see, and so we have a limited amount of time. So the time limit will be enforced. The candidates know they have two minutes to make an opening statement. They will all have an opportunity to answer each question, but only for one minute, and the closing statement will be one minute. Correct? Are we on the same page? Okay? And that's right, there will be a warning. Now unfortunately, I get to be the police officer, so we will enforce the time limit. I would urge you not to applaud. Please, no applause. If you want to applaud at the end, fine. But we don't have a lot of time, and it would be best if you hold your applause until the end. We'll try to do this initially in alphabetical order, and then we'll reverse it and try to make this as fair as possible. I would urge you, if you've written questions that have just kind of a political bite or an attack, and then don't be offended when I edit that out. So with that, we will begin with a two-minute opening statement, and we'll start with candidate Cecil Bothwell.
Can you hear me? Having a mic this far from me makes me uncertain, that's why I wasn't sure. I want to thank so many of you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's what I wondered. Now, can... It could be a "not on" mic. Thank you. Yeah, I can lean over a little bit here. Thanks to all of you for showing up here. It's really gratifying that people care enough to show up for a forum, for a city race, that's so typically underrepresented among voters. I mean, people don't show up to vote, which is a sad commentary. And I want to remind all of you that Tim Moffett doesn't want you to vote. So, vote, okay? I've been on council now for four years, my first term. I feel like I've had some pretty good effect in the city. I've reined in some arguments, I've made some positive arguments. I've voted alone on some issues, and I've voted with the rest of council on many issues. I've served on SASE, the Sustainability Advisory Committee on Energy and the Environment, as a liaison to that committee for four years, because I really believe that energy is a critical issue for our community. The largest amount of dollars that leave our local economy is for energy, in the form of electricity via coal from out of state, or oil, or gas from out of state, for nuclear power, at least east of here. We can generate more power here and do more for ourselves. So that's been a big goal of mine. Civil liberties also matter immensely to me. I ran in 2009, and one of my platform plans was that I was going to introduce a civil liberties resolution, to make it clear to the people of Asheville, and to the people of the world, that Asheville supports the Bill of Rights, that we don't discriminate against people based on their race, their gender, their ethnicity, their gender orientation, their religion, their political viewpoints. That will finally come before council on October 22nd. It's taken me four years to bring it all the way through, numerous committees, numerous consultations. It's amazing how slowly the wheels grind sometimes, but I'm going to keep my promise next week, getting that on the agenda. I support multimodal transportation as part of our energy picture. I've tried to help with affordable housing in a number of ways. I've been chair of the Public Safety Committee for these last two years, and have been riding that horse during some very difficult times, with the fire department losing our captain, Jeff Cohen, and the chiefs.
Mike Lanning, could you take the microphone? Thank you.
Well, first of all, thanks for inviting me into this forum. It's nice to see the big turnout here. I was actually, you know, my native Asheville is raised in Asheville, raised in West Asheville, which is now a cool place to live. Thank goodness, because it's always been nice. It's not, I never considered it worse Asheville, I always considered it best Asheville. So, I'm glad West Asheville's starting to get some recognition. Thank you. After high school, I entered the military, went into the United States Air Force, and spent four years in the military as a security policeman. And once discharged from the Air Force, I wasn't wise enough to go into anything else. I went directly to work for the Sheriff's Department, where I worked there for about three years. After leaving the Sheriff's Department, I went to the Asheville Police Department July 4th of 1987. And unfortunately, on my second night with the police department, I was involved in a shooting where I was shot in the line of duty during an armed robbery. That really changed my focus, not only on my professional life, but personal life. I became very active over the years through the Policeman's Association, became the president of the local chapter of the Policeman's Association, which is semi-union without being a union in name. We did candidate screenings, and I noticed the former mayor, Sidney Beck, there. We endorsed her when she ran for mayor. So I was involved in doing screenings for candidates. Now I'm on the other end, and I'm finding out some eye-opening experience. So, very nice talking to y'all.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks to the League for having us, and for throwing a great forum in a great room here. My name's Gordon Smith. I'm currently a member of Asheville City Council, I was elected in 2009. I graduated from Warren Wilson College back in the early 90s, and served overseas for a couple of years with a group called the Brethren Volunteer Service, doing community reconciliation in Belfast, Northern Ireland, with Protestant and Catholic teens. I've since become a child and family therapist, working in mental health with kids and families here in the area. When I ran in 2009, I ran on affordability and sustainability, and I've delivered on those campaign promises. We've been able to bring good-paying jobs to Asheville. We've tripled the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and created the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We have added miles of sidewalks, bike lanes, and greenways, as well as improving our transit service. We have, I was able to introduce same-sex domestic partner benefits to the city of Asheville, and a quality resolution, and a domestic partner registry, that was able to ensure the people of Asheville that their city council and their city government recognizes them as equals, even while the federal government has yet to take that step. So, when it came around to deciding whether to run again, the question before me was, well, have we gotten to where we needed to go? And the short answer was no. Even though we were facing a great recession and a hostile legislature, we were able to make a lot of advancements. And going forward, what we need to do is double down on affordable housing stock in this city, continue to create that interlinked multimodal transportation network, and change our economic policies so we can grow more good jobs in this city and grow Asheville's middle class. Thank you.
Does mine work? Yes. Hello, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event this evening. I'm a 42, almost 43-year-old father of three children. I've had the honor of being tortured by being a stay-at-home father for the last three years to my twin sons, which has been quite an eye-opening experience. My top three priorities of earning the privilege to serve on city council are as follows: to use the potential of enterprise revenue to its fullest extent to supplement the funding of city school systems, establishing Asheville as the premier city in the southeast for public school education; secondly, to improve the level of maintenance of our infrastructure and civic services for the safety and benefit of our residents, and for the respectable presentation of our community to tourists, retirees, and prospective businesses; and third, to improve civic efficiency through 100% transparency of all public financial transactions, specifically by posting the register of the city's checkbook online, so that everyone can see exactly how money is being collected and spent every day. It is my firm belief, supported by business and economics publications such as Forbes Magazine, The Economist, Business Weekly, and many others, that a strong education system is one of the key components to the economic strength of a community. The values held by individuals when choosing a place to live are the same values held by businesses choosing a place to operate. While I certainly do not believe that corporations are people, the decisions made within them are made by people, just like you and me. Asheville is always on the market, so to speak. We are, our community is on display 24/7. As we invite tourists and retirees and businesses to visit our community, we cannot afford for them to take a pass on visiting again, relocating here, or establishing a business here based on a negative first impression. People make these decisions before they ever meet city officials or realtors. Our first impression must be supported by fundamental integrity, not superficial blitz. And I will strengthen that fundamental integrity. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gwen Whistler. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk to you. It's great to see all of you. I moved to Asheville seven years ago. Prior to coming here, I was a business executive. My last full-time position was as the CEO of the Coleman Company, the outdoor recreation company. When I moved to Asheville, I started a company called Asheville Profits. And Asheville Profit, through Asheville Profits, I consult with businesses, and my clients pay for the services by volunteering their time with a local nonprofit. I volunteer with a lot of other organizations here in Asheville. I'm the president of the Botanical Gardens, so go down and visit that on the way home, before dark, of course. I'm part of that Food Policy Council. I'm a bicycle safety instructor. I'm part of Strive Not to Drive, and various other organizations. My background in business, I think, taught me a lot of to listen well. It taught me to look at issues at a high level, and it helped me to allocate resources when funds are restricted or tight. And I think, I hope those skills will help me when, if I'm elected to city council. I believe in a safe, healthy, and vibrant Asheville. Safe is a strong police and fire department. Good streets, well-maintained streets, sidewalks, both in volume and well-maintained. Healthy, clean air, clean water, access to green spaces, sustainability underlying all of our decisions, and vibrant so that all of our residents in Asheville, no matter their economic or age group, have an opportunity to thrive financially. I look forward to tonight. Thank you.
Let's reverse the order and start with Gwen Whistler, who you just heard from. You are running for an at-large seat on city council. The General Assembly may impose district elections on the city. Is that a good idea? And they could conceivably change the number of members. What do you think the ideal number should be in terms of the size of city council?
Okay. I think deciding whether the city should have districted elections is really a local issue. And I would ask that the city actually vote on this. I've not heard a big hue and cry from the citizenry asking for districted elections. And I personally don't think Asheville's big enough to have districts. I think there's a benefit to have at-large seats, because I think you can look at the needs of all sorts of various areas if you're not districted. But mostly, it's what the citizens of Asheville want.
I don't believe that the decision to district the city council structure in Asheville should be dictated on high by the North Carolina State Legislature, but I am in agreement with that. I think that that's a better system for Asheville. Most of the cities in North Carolina that are larger than Asheville, with just the exception of a few, have district elections. Several that are smaller than Asheville also have district elections. Asheville is very geographically segmented, and each area of town has a slightly different flavor and different concerns. I also think that district elections allows for a greater focus of neighborhood needs, and that's the most local place that politics exists. And so I think it would be a great benefit to Asheville. And I would also like to see the municipal elections shifted to a regular even-year cycle to correspond with the state and national elections.
I agree with Ms. Whistler that we need to be making these local decisions locally. We've seen an effort by the General Assembly to take our water system. We've seen an effort by the General Assembly to take our airport. This is another effort from the General Assembly to say to people in Asheville that their voices don't matter. So step one is, the people of Asheville need to be making this decision, not legislators in Raleigh. My personal position around it is that folks who can put together a good campaign staff and earn enough citywide support, that folks from anywhere in the city can win. We've seen Councilman Pelley come from the east recently. Councilman Bill Russell, who had his place of business in the south, and spent the majority of his time in the south, was a recent winner. So I think that we've had folks from various areas of the city prove that if you're willing to come forward and make a good run, that you can win. I would also say that being a public servant in this way is something... Oh, I'm going to have to stop. But I respect everyone who's willing to take this shot and run for council.
Can you hear me?
You can hear me. Okay.
Well, I've got mixed emotions on it. I don't think the legislation dictates to Asheville what to do. On the other hand, am I totally against district elections? No, I'm not, because currently I'm the only one running from South Asheville. And I've been growing up here, living here all these years. I've noticed that for years and years, many years, if you've lived here a long time, there's always been, from the 70s, 80s, and 90s, a group from the Kimberly Avenue area, and it's a law firm. And they've always either had someone on council, or they've had the mayor in position. So, I think they've always ignored other sections of town. And I find it refreshing that you've got a female African-American from West Asheville as the mayor now. That's a good thing. So, I think going to district elections, I think you do actually pay more attention to the local area, and you can have more input. And currently, I don't think you have that.
Rather than repeat much that's been said, I'm solidly for the at-large elections at the size Asheville is today. Chicago, for instance, has district elections, and each district is about 50,000 people. If we had that here, we'd have one and a half districts. We're a pretty, I think, although there are different areas of town, we're pretty homogeneous. And to address the year that the elections occur, which was part of the bill that Tim Moffett proposed, although it hasn't moved forward yet, I don't think it should be moved to even years. Because city issues, although we don't get big turnout in city elections, city issues would completely disappear in a presidential election year. There would be no front-page coverage at all of city issues. And I think having it nod years helps the League and others raise city issues to some kind of prominence.
Let everyone know that occasionally I will ask yes or no questions, and I will insist that they be answered yes or no. So, not to be rude, but just to change the pace and move this along, there will be some yes or no questions. Mike Lanning, you raised the issue of Terry Bellamy, a black female mayor. And we'll start with Gordon Smith on this. When the new city council is sworn in, there will be no minorities on council. What does that say about the city, if anything at all?
I think what it says about the city is that each of the members of city council has to be sensitive to all the needs of all the citizens of the city. That if we look at various socioeconomic and racial groups that may not be represented on city council, that it's going to be up to us to reach out to those communities and to hear from them, and make sure that their needs are met at the council level, and that the concerns are heard. I will say that Terry Bellamy is one of these people who, she ran several great campaigns. She ran really young and won, and then won again to get on council, and then ran for mayor and won, and then ran again and won. So I think it just goes to show that folks with talent and enthusiasm and energy can make it happen.
Let's go to Mike Lanning next.
Same question. Well, it's like Gordon said, you'll have to reach out to the community. And I got it, I entered the race at the very last minute myself. Because I waited till the last day, and I seen nobody was filing. And unless someone files and tries to run for seat, you're going to have the same thing happening again. You want to make it tough on your incumbents. I mean, you don't want to just give them, you know, an easy chance. So I jumped in at the last minute, and I really don't know what the answer is. I'm finding out funds, you know, I raise less funds than anyone. It's obvious, because I get, you know, I was a police officer, and everybody I worked with were, you know, poor, because I was a police officer. But more needs to be done, and I don't know what the answer is, but reaching out to the minority communities is a big, big plus.
Let's run this way?
Sure.
I find it somewhat troubling that we don't have more diverse representation. We did have a Latino candidate two years ago, I believe. We've occasionally had African-American candidates. Obviously, we're right now six white, and the mayor right now. But we voted unanimously to fund the Eagle Market Street project, which is going to revitalize a historic black district in the city. So we're not ignoring any particular community because of our race. I hope we see beyond that. But I would have been thrilled had we seen a more diverse candidate pool this year. I can't tell whether people are getting really bored with city, or if they're really happy. It's hard to guess. But I'd urge anyone to run, and as far as the money goes, I get what you're saying about having maybe not a great, a rich pool of donors, but my average donor is giving me $50. And, you know, if you find 500 people giving money, that works.
Let's go down, right down the line. Jonathan?
I would say that it's indicative of generational disenfranchisement of minorities, and this is probably pretty typical in most American cities. And there is certainly a problem with participation in the political process when it comes to money. I can assure you that my family is actually poor, despite my dapper duds tonight. And the pressures that are put on people when they live in poverty are immense. And it's really difficult to change your economic trajectory when pressures are putting down on you. So I feel that it's just, again, issues of poverty and disenfranchisement of the minority classes in our town.
I think it's a little disappointing about the lack of diversity. I mean, I'm the only woman running for council. So I'd like, I would have liked to have seen actually those have a primary. It's a little disappointing that there's only five, or three seats. But at the same time, I hope that whoever is elected does reach out to the community and try to listen to all the various constituents, no matter the race, age, or economics.
Let's go to, this is a yes or no question, to a complicated issue, and then there'll be some follow-up. Yes or no, should the city drop its legal challenge of the General Assembly passed law that transferred ownership of the water system and control of the water system to MSD? We'll start with Cecil Bothwell.
Hell, no.
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 My daughter's in that room, so I'll say just no.
No.
Let's start with Gwen Whistler on this, the follow-up then. How would you end the dispute over who owns and controls the water system?
Well, I'm hoping that the lawsuit ends it favorably for the city. And if it doesn't end it favorably for the city, I would support going further, as far as we can go legislatively. At the same time, if it is reasonable, I think it would be a good idea for city leaders to start reaching out to Hendersonville and Bunkham County, and see if there's some way that we could work it out. But I don't think that, I don't think that's an alternative to maintaining our water.
I certainly don't believe that we should drop the water suit. And I guess the coin is sort of in the air right now. Some people think that it's a slam dunk, because Tim Moffett way overreached in this. And then at the same time, several people have mentioned the fact that Asheville's never won a suit against the state. I'm not sure if that's entirely true or not. But I would absolutely move forward with any appeals and take it the judicial road as far as it possibly could be taken. And then start looking for alternatives on how we can own our water and our resources. Maybe it's not through the Asheville Water System per se, but it is a natural resource that belongs to all of us as keepers of this land. So I think we need to look outside the box a little bit, and redefine what ownership actually means.
So going forward, there's, the judge is going to hear the arguments from both sides in about four or five months' time, and then issue a verdict after that. It's my hope that we'll win. The founders of our city had the foresight to purchase 20,000 acres of pristine watershed that is all of the citizens of Asheville's right to keep and to share them. So I think that going forward, I'm hoping that Judge Manning, who is a, has proven himself to be a very intelligent and a very wise person, will rule in the city's favor. Should he not, I'll certainly favor seeking an appeal and going from there. But make no mistake, this was brought as an act of aggression. And it's not as though anyone came to us and asked us how we would like this to happen. They just told us how it was going to happen.
Well, no one knows, being a former law enforcement officer, no one knows how the judge is going to rule. I mean, they take a lot of things into account. But I truly believe the city will win this. But the history of the city winning lawsuits is very poor. I mean, I've been involved in two lawsuits, working for the police department suing the city over sick time and other issues, because the city staff made dumb decisions. I'm two and one. So I'm hoping that the city wins this. Because if the city loses it, we're in trouble financially. And we're going to have to tighten our belts and look for other things and change our priorities when it comes to spending.
The idea of taking without compensation has been covered in natural law, going back to the Roman Empire, especially where it involves water. I can't believe we're going to actually lose this lawsuit. If this judge decides against us, I would certainly advocate an appeal on the constitutional question of that exact thing, taking something, private property, which under our state law, when a city owns something that's used for proprietary purposes, that's for something which is not in the normal course of business. Now, the city doesn't have to have a water system. So it's a proprietary business. It is treated under the law as a private ownership. And taking private land without compensation just cannot occur under our US or North Carolina constitutions. So I think we're bound to win this. And I will say this, they can have those pipes when they pry my cold, dead fingers.
Let's start with John Wayne Scott on this. In the same vein, I guess, what steps would you take to improve the city's relationship with the local delegation?
I would like to boldly stand up and take the challenge that the NCGA has sort of thrown down on us to operate our city a little bit more like a business. The city is actually a corporation, and I think there are a lot of opportunities available to us to expand revenue in the, through enterprise revenue rather than taxation. So if we are given the challenge to operate more like a business, then we need permission to do the fundamental thing that a business endeavor is, which is to make money. This is specifically about participating in the bottled water industry, as we have copious amounts of water available to us for incredibly cheap amounts of money and railroad access. I think that we need to move from the pennies end of the bottled water industry spectrum to the dollars end, and try to generate money outside of our taxation structure. So I would just answer the legislation's challenge.
Let's go to Gwen, Gwen Whistler on that, please.
Well, I would advocate continuing to talk to them. We are, we are, I feel like we have to play the hand we got dealt. And so I think we have to continue to talk to them, try to understand why this is happening. I think getting involved with other cities and other municipalities, which the city's already doing, I think strengthening those relationships so that we can really talk to these other organizations and other cities and municipalities and say, what they're doing to Asheville, once it's successful, they're going to come and do to you. And so I think if we, again, kind of keep talking with our legislators, really... And so, I think if we, again, kind of keep talking with our legislators, really not name-call, not call people out using and keeping appropriate dialogue, but working with other cities, I think could help.
Gordon Spitt, please.
I think that one of the things that's been helpful and will continue to be helpful in our relationships with our legislators is to continue to help them understand that Asheville is the economic engine of western North Carolina, that in addition to being the job center, we are also the revenue center for a lot of what is provided to all of Buncombe County residents. And that in order for our city to remain healthy, there are a number of things that we're going to need to continue to be that engine. So, I think making that case is important. On another level, maintaining those lines of communications. Before I came here today, I sent an email to Representatives Moffett, Ramsey, and Fisher regarding the cutting off of funding for the Women Infant Children Nutrition Assistance Program, asking for their help in restoring that funding rather than seeing children go hungry. I believe that we can find common ground around things like hungry children and other priorities. So, I think that keeping those lines open is going to be really helpful in continuing to make our case.
Well, the first step you have to do, you have to reach out and try to speak and dialogue, and you have to get along with your legislation. Because the legislation did this for one reason, because they could. Because Tim Moffett was upset. And you've got to give Tim Moffett, I don't agree with what he did, but he's smart in what he did was, the city pushed him around, and he paid some fines, filed a run, won, and now he's pushing the city around. So, I don't agree with what he did, but he's smart in what he did. So, you've got to work, you've got to contact the legislation. Or, and I really believe this is happening, I truly believe the election cycle will weed them out. And I believe that'll be of great help.
I agree with Mike, only I'd take a little stronger position on that. Tim Moffett's a board member of ALIC, the American Legislative Exchange Council. He is marching in lockstep with that organization nationwide, introducing legislation here that's happening across the country. This isn't unique. I don't think there's any way to reason with that man on issues that matter because they've decided they want to hit the cities. The cities are the strongholds of Democratic voters, and they're trying to weaken cities across the state and across the country. That's why my campaign this year is chiefly organizing young people to go into the streets, to go door-to-door, to do phone banking, next year to take Tim Moffett home. That's the way I plan to deal with Tim Moffett and with Nathan Ramsey, who's marching in lockstep with Tim. I don't think there's any working with these people. They're ideologues who are ramming their ideas down our throats after not having run on those ideas. They ran on a small government platform, and now they're going to Raleigh and telling us what to do. I won't take it.
Let's move on to an education question. City council appoints members of the Asheville School Board. Do you support that system? Or would you like to see city school board members run for our seats on the school board? And we'll start with Mr. Wayne Scott, please.
I'm not well-versed enough to really answer that. I think that we do need to have better oversight, so whatever mechanism serves to that, and I think I would prefer, I would imagine that city council would be able to stay on the heels of the board a little bit more consistently than elected officials who only have the opportunity to weigh in every few years. So, I would imagine that city council system currently is adequate. But I do think that more transparency and more oversight needs to take place within that system.
Let's go to Gordon Spitt next.
I'm open to the conversation of it. I have done a lot of research as far as how it works in other cities. But I have heard from people, from, it doesn't matter where you are on the socioeconomic spectrum or political spectrum, I've heard different views on this from a lot of different people. So, I'd be interested in examining it and seeing where to go from here.
Mike Lanning, please.
First of all, I've got a real problem when someone's leaving and paying them $175,000. I just, I've never worked at a job where they're paying me that much to leave, or I'd keep working somewhere and keep leaving. So, I mean, I personally think probably having elected officials, because they're held more accountable. Because if you don't like what they're doing, you can have, you can, just someone else can run and think they're unseated, so.
Cecil Bothwell, please.
Yeah, I generally agree with that, that anyone charged with spending tax money should be an elected official. It's the reason I, for instance, opposed the Business Improvement District downtown, where a non-elected board wouldn't begin to tax money to spend. I really think we'd be better off with an elected school board, although I haven't looked closely at the issue. It's kind of weird that we get to appoint the board, but we have no control of the budget at all. The budget's determined by the school board and by the state and by the county to some degree. And so, we're appointing people that we really can't hold accountable to the financial outcome.
Gwen Whistler, please.
It is a complicated issue. When you appoint people, I think you can look, you can get a broad range of skill sets and interests that, to bring to the table, which I think is good, especially in an organization that's so specific as a school board. On the other hand, if they're elected, they're a lot more accountable. So, I think, I think I would like to study it more. I do, though, question that, the fact that we, the city council has appointed those people, I argue that they aren't accountable to the city council. So, I think as a city council member, I would ask that maybe city council reach or require that the school board be a little more accountable to city council.
Let's do a quick yes or no question. The state may force the consolidation of city and county schools. And we'll start with Mike Lanning. Yes or no, is it time to consolidate city and county schools?
Yes.
Yes.
Gordon Spitt?
No.
John Wayne Scott?
I don't think the conversation has even begun to, is not, we haven't even had it yet to answer that question in a yes or no way. Sorry.
Gwen Whistler, please.
No.
Going away and Cecil Bothwell?
No.
Just a quick follow-up, the prerogative of the chair, I'm just curious about this. When you were in school K through 12, Gwen Whistler, did you attend public or private schools?
Public.
Next?
Public.
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 And do any of you, and we'll start with Cecil Bothwell, do you currently have or have you had children in the city school system?
No.
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 I currently have one and two waiting to get in.
No.
Thank you very much. Let's talk about the, one, well, two more yes or no questions, if you don't mind. Do you have confidence in Police Chief William Anderson, Mike Lanning?
No.
Yes.
No.
Gwen Whistler?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to start with Cecil Bothwell. Same question, yes or no, do you have confidence in City Manager Gary Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I don't consider that a yes or no question.
Okay. Yes, okay. Right now, the police department is undergoing a strategic planning process. It's underway. Is the police department, Cecil Bothwell, the right size? Do we have an adequate number of police officers for Asheville?
According to the department, we're down around 24 from what they, the department considers an optimum staffing. We're still covering all the positions. The chief has assured us that through overtime and the way they're running the schedules, that they're not shorting any neighborhood of coverage by the police because of that shortfall. But they'd like to have more officers and therefore pay less overtime. I'm not in a position to know exactly if this is exactly the right-sized police department we should have, but crime has fallen over the last several years. Who can say? Is it the economy changing? Robberies picked up, violent crimes went down, then there'll be a surge in violence. I almost think that that's separate from what the police do. The police do solve crimes. And I'm pretty confident, especially after the recent grilling that the police departments had, we've found that there have been some structural problems, and we're fixing them.
No, there's not enough manning right now. According to the document I have, August the 20th, February 27th, officers are short, which means they've hired 16 now that has to go through BLET. BLET takes four months, and then another four months to have them onboard where they're actually productive as a police officer. That's eight months. They've hired six certified, which takes, which means they've been certified through another agency. Takes four months for them. My biggest concern is, in an eight-month period, how many more are they going to lose? Because they've lost 14 since July 1st. So, is there not, if there's not enough police, you can drive across West Valley, across Smokey Park Bridge, and look on the right, and you see a building from both ends, fully graffiti. When I worked at the police department, and that had happened, and it's hard to believe that somebody could spend that much time and do that much damage to a building without being seen. So, they're shorthanded, they're overworked, they're having to work on their days off. And I ask you, would you want to work a 12-hour shift coming at 6:00 in the morning? It's supposed to get off at 6:00 in the evening to get to regular Smokey Park Bridge and then work until 10:00 at night? They're undermanned.
I think they are undermanned to a certain degree, and that's something that we get to look at going forward. I think ultimately, though, when you're looking at crime statistics, the things that you want to look at is how to raise the well-being of the people in your city to reduce poverty and to make neighborhoods more walkable and livable. If you want to prevent crime rather than hiring cops to catch criminals, I think that's going to be your most productive way forward. As far as making long-term investments in the city, what we need to be doing is addressing those things that are going to grow the middle class here. They're going to provide better jobs, they're going to provide more housing, provide better transportation, provide access to affordable fresh food, so we can bring the crime down through prevention. I think that we do need some more staffing in the police department. And it's, that's, that's something I'm hoping the chief's going to bring to us soon. But ultimately, that's not the solution.
I've never heard of reducing crime through fresh food, so that's a little bit new to me. I think that in addition to the fact that we've got low numbers quantifiably, that the police department is understaffed, we also have a problem with high turnover, so we've got a lack of experience within our police force as well. So, the numbers of police officers is one number, but we also have a low number of years of experience in the police force. One of the ideas that I would like to explore is the concept of an auxiliary police unit. This would be police officers that respond to property crimes, nonviolent events, and officers that are there to take police reports. And maybe we can spend less money training officers on armed force and have a unit that's there to serve the public and be more public assistance, peace officers, and augment our police force a little bit more and try to bring some affordability into raising the staff and improve morale so we don't have high turnover.
Let's hear from Gwen Whistler, please.
From what I understand, yes, I think we are probably understaffed. I don't think that you should staff so that you have to require officers to work overtime. That being said, I did go to the community meeting where, in, I guess, within downtown Asheville, and the citizens are mixed on how they feel about, how they feel about the police. I think certain programs that the police have are really being effective. I think the Community Resource Officers Program is effective, and neighborhoods seem to feel that those are helping with crime. And then, obviously, there are a lot of other issues. It wasn't all positive. So, I'm hoping that when this whole study gets finished, that Chief Anderson and the department will come forward and present that to city council, and we'll improve safety in the city.
Let's begin with Gordon Spitt on this. Other than property taxes and sales tax revenue, where can the city turn for a consistent and reliable source of revenue?
Where can we turn to? Well, theoretically, there's a number of places we can turn to. Theoretically, we could turn to an occupancy tax expansion. Currently, there's a 4% occupancy tax. 3% of that goes towards tourism marketing, and another percent goes towards tourism product development. Other cities in the state have a larger occupancy tax. And if we had the opportunity to be able to utilize some of the monies that the visitors bring to our city, when the visitors come, and it's really great because they support a lot of small and independent businesses, and there's a lot of good things that can happen as a result of that, but one thing that does happen is our infrastructure is taxed to a degree. And it's up to us, the citizens, to then pay to maintain the infrastructure that's being utilized by 3 million-plus visitors a year. So, I would certainly advocate for a rise in the occupancy tax.
Quick follow-up, would you agree that it's highly unlikely it needs the approval of the General Assembly?
I think, I think that it's been an ongoing conversation. It's been fortunate that the Tourism Development Authority has partnered with the city on things like improving the Civic Center, John B. Lewis Soccer Field, and some of these things that some of the citizens can enjoy. And ultimately, I believe that if our tourism industry is to maintain its integrity, the integrity of Asheville is a special place to be, then supporting the integrity of the city is going to be central to that. So, I think over time, we can get there.
Well, I agree with Gordon on the occupancy tax. It's a shame Asheville doesn't get anything from that. And this would be a perfect opportunity. If Republicans are so pro-business, it's time to reach out to Republicans, they're in charge, test them and see how pro-business they are. I don't see how they could be against that. I know in the past, the legislation was against it. I don't know if they've spoke to the legislators that are currently in office over this, but they sell themselves as pro-business and this, sell them on this and see if they'll support the city on it.
I think we could start busking. I think if council went out and just sang in the streets, maybe the people would pay us to shut up or something. Yeah, I have to agree, the largest possible pool would be that occupancy tax. And it seems really unfair to me that other cities have even up to an 11-cent room tax, and a good portion goes to city general funds, and we are stuck at this 4-cent level because the hoteliers here have fought it and fought it and fought it. They claim we wouldn't get the kind of conventions here that we get if there was a higher tax. My argument to that has been again and again, people do not pay attention to that on their hotel bill, not significantly. It's not going to change the attraction of Asheville. Will we get it to the follow-up? Not with this legislature. They are, they are not pro-business. I think that's, that's an argument that really needs to be made over and over again. They're actually doing serious damage to business in North Carolina. They're pro-certain rich interests, but they aren't pro-business. They're wrecking this state as a place for business to come. People across the country are deciding this is not a place to retire anymore. It's not a place to move their businesses to. So, I don't think we can count on the current legislators at all.
I think the only way that we could get that, get access to a little bit more of the tourism revenue by increasing the taxes and/or getting Asheville to benefit from a piece of that is basically, we're going to have to create a united front. So, it's going to have to be the leaders of Asheville and the hotel industry going together to Raleigh. I think that's the only way we could get access to additional funds.
Let's start with Mike Lanning on this.
Wait a minute. Mr. Wayne Scott?
One more, sorry.
It's all right. If I were to ask you how you felt if you sold a house for $176,000, and I told you that a year later, that same house with very little improvement sold for between $62 and $93 million, I believe that you would feel probably that you got out of the game a little bit early. New Belgium is going to be brewing 500,000 barrels of beer a year once they achieve maximum capacity. That's 62 million gallons of water a year that they're going to require to brew this much beer. Three-quarters of that goes back into the sewer system. The retail value of that water is anywhere between $62 million and $93 million. In the market research, all you need to do is go to Harris Teeter and look at the price of a gallon of water. The other day, I went in there and I saw a gallon of water that was shipped here from Virginia. It had a picture of a dog on it. 3% of proceeds go to the SPCA, which sounds great. It's $1.60 for a gallon of water. And again, we are selling water to companies like New Belgium. This is not to say that we should not have New Belgium do this. This is just to illustrate how much water we have and how little it costs us. 62 million gallons of water being sold for $176,000. So, again, if we can move our position on the spectrum in the water, bottled water industry, we can generate many millions of dollars in enterprise revenue that's completely outside the taxation structure.
Well, let's stick with John Wayne Scott on the next question.
It's Jonathan, by the way.
Jonathan, sorry. Jonathan Wayne Scott. My name's David Tussaud.
It's nice to meet you. I won't call you David.
Yes, this is a yes or no question. We'll do it really quickly. Do you support the planned construction of the New Belgium Brewery in the River Arts District?
Not as planned.
Yes.
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 Thank you. What can the City Council actually do to attract high-paying jobs to this area? And we'll start with Gordon Smith.
Well, I think that we've proven successful in attracting high-paying jobs with GE Aviation and Linamar and New Belgium, the plastic card expansion, and Novo Nordisk in the office parking mills over. I think that what we need to do now is refocus our economic incentives on our homegrown small and medium-sized businesses, the folks that are here that are trying to grow their businesses, some of our smaller brewers that want to expand. And that's why I initiated a few months ago an Economic Incentives Task Force through the city of Asheville that is going to bring back some results here early in the new year, and we can refocus these incentives and be able to help them. We have so much creativity and so much drive among people in this city, and I think that we need to continue to be attractive to those big employers. We need to recognize that Asheville has to become as independent and as resilient as it can be from within.
Mike Lanning, please.
Well, first, bringing the industries here and bringing in good-paying jobs is a great thing, and need to continue doing that. I think, if I'm not mistaken, I've been told, I'm not this fact or not, that businesses in Asheville are charged a higher percentage on their water rate than citizens. Is that true? I don't know.
No.
Okay. I was told it's lower. I was told businesses pay higher, and it didn't make no sense to me. If you're trying to attract business, why would you punish them, charge them more for water rates? So, incentives, I believe in, you know, tax incentives, property incentives, but I also believe they've got to give back to the community, not only wages, but other means. They've got to invest, and they can invest money in the school system for scholarships and those type of things.
I didn't know they were mixing it up. I've proven to be a pretty strong skeptic about incentives proposals on City Council. I think the only one I voted for so far was the New Belgium one, and that was because it's going to be a transformational project, it's a worker-owned company, they've got a stellar environmental record, and it's going to be a game-changer for Asheville. Every business that comes to us wants incentives. They all say, "Well, if we don't get this, we're not going to show up there." I think that's generally not true. I think that the way we make, the way we make economic growth happen here is to make Asheville such an incredible place to be that businesses like New Belgium will want to come here. The workers own that company, and they wanted to come here. Philadelphia was their other choice. They, maybe that was where they had a water supply that was suitable and a site that was suitable, and they decided to come here. That's the way we attract the kind of businesses we want to have operating in Asheville. And I think that we've seen it happen, for instance, in Boulder, Colorado, where a change in how--
Okay, we're going to have to stop.
Well, I don't think that it's a primary responsibility of the Nashville City Council to create jobs. I think the important thing is for the city to be attractive to businesses. So, you have to think about that from the regulatory environment and from our infrastructure environment. So, investing in things like multimodal transportation, in greenways, in sidewalks, in making sure our roads are well-maintained makes the city attractive, and I think that's the City Council's biggest responsibility. I would also agree with Gordon that I think it's important that we work on our homegrown businesses. I volunteer with Mountain Biz Works with established businesses to help them grow and grow, and therefore be able to create living wage jobs.
Forbes Magazine currently has Asheville rated as number 29 of the top 200 cities to do business in and have a career. They use three metrics. One is the education system, one is job growth, and the other is the cost of doing business. Asheville already provides a tremendous amount of incentive, not through incentives programs, but just to the attractiveness of Asheville itself. Most of us pay a premium to be here. We know that it's a difficult place to find a job, that wages are low and housing is high, but that also indicates that people are willing to be here in the first place. Cecil mentioned New Belgium came here versus Philadelphia. Well, Philadelphia's living wage rate is $1.21 an hour higher than Asheville, so for the 150 supposed jobs that New Belgium's going to bring here, if they gave $1.21 an hour to every employee across the board annually, that would save them $363,000 a year to pay a living wage here versus somewhere else.
Let's start at that point. Let's move to, start with Cecil Bothwell on this. When I say quote-unquote "affordable housing," what does that mean to you? What does affordable housing mean to you?
I think that our definition of affordable housing, our personal definitions depend a great deal on our personal income. I think we have to look at the idea that the workforce that's working in Asheville ought to be able to live in Asheville or in the near environs at a reasonable price. A third of my income, I think, is considered a reasonable rent. I think it's a very difficult thing to accomplish within city limits, especially a place that's trying to appeal to rich people to vacation and move here, because we have people coming into the city bidding up the cost of housing and attending, going to businesses that pay traditionally very low wages. So, we're driving our workforce out to the margins, which is why I think that a more reasonable approach is to make transit more affordable so those workers can get to their jobs rather than trying to fight the market.
Well, affordable housing, the first house I bought was two blocks from Piscaview, and it cost me $33,000. You buy cars now, it costs more than that, and they gave you 30 years to pay off the house, and now you pay a car for seven years. So, the basic deal with affordable housing is, can they make the house, can they make the house payment and still live and sustain with their other income? It's, you don't want to, you can't put people in the homes that are, you know, making the house poor. So, it's a balance. They've got to, plus you've got to have, you've got to live in a good environment where it's safe, and it's tough in Asheville. It really is, always has been. And even my dad, the business he was in, he'd always say, "You know, we can't pay you a lot, but you live in Asheville." You know, you can't eat on happiness, so.
The definition that the city uses is 30% of your income going towards your housing cost, although now, we're now looking at a formula called housing plus transportation, where that number would be 50%. I think that if people can live close to the places that they work and have more transportation options, then housing also becomes more affordable. The city has tripled its Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a revolving loan fund that goes to people who are willing to build more affordable housing that meets that definition that I just described. And so, there's a lot of builders who want to help do that. And so, the city is going to be there to help them with small, low-interest loans that they can then go to the bank with and say, "Hey, look, we've got the full faith and credit of the city behind us." And then they can get those bank loans. We've worked together with Mountain Housing, with Givens Estate, and with other organizations to be able to help create those in the city, and we need to do more of it.
I moved here 15 years ago, and like I said a minute ago, the nature of living in Asheville is that it's a hard place to find a job, wages are low, and that housing is expensive, and that hasn't changed since I've lived here. I don't know that any policy that we could employ would put any measurable amount of downward pressure on the housing market. Again, most people know that this is a great place to live, and I've eaten plenty of happiness sandwiches, and they don't go very far. But I don't really see what City Council is going to be able to do. I approve of the Housing Trust Fund. It does help some families, but it doesn't really change much of the market. So, again, we have to focus more on how to put more money in people's pockets, because Asheville is Asheville, and it's a wonderful place to live, and people pay a premium to be here. And that describes the demand, and that will always describe the demand, no matter what we do on the supply side of the equation.
Affordable housing, I guess I would define as about a third of what your wages are, and so it changes according to what your wages are. And so, I think that the city should be working to bring businesses or encourage businesses to be paying a living wages or above and attracting businesses that will pay living wages. And I agree, I think there is a bit of a problem. This is an incredibly attractive place to live. We're a lot like Boulder and Denver, and so you are always going to get pressure. The market will bid those, the housing prices up.
We're running short on time, so I'd like a quick response to a couple of more questions. What are the top three most pressing issues the city faces over the next 12 to 24 months? Let's start with Gordon Smith.
The city--
The three most pressing issues the city of Asheville faces over the next 12 to 24 months?
Okay, well, I think that we've described a lot of them already up here. More living wage and family wage jobs, more affordable housing, and the need for more affordable transportation options.
Gwen Whistler on that.
Fiscal issues, basic city infrastructure and transportation.
Jonathan Wayne Scott, please.
The lack of innovation and creativity on City Council, and I would volunteer to improve that. And again, education with our defunding statewide and at a federal level, it's definitely going to affect all of the children in this city as well. And basic maintenance of our infrastructure so that the people who visit here every day, who are here in town right now, see a respectable community that is putting its best foot forward.
Police, if you don't stop the retention of the police department, it's going to be a big problem. The top priority in any city should be your public safety and the safety of the citizens, number one. Number two, we deal with affordable housing. There's got to be a way to fix the problem, and raising taxes, as was done this year, is not helping matters. And number three, probably, outside the environment, start spending more time on the environment and trying to address those problems, creating a new industry.
I think rapid deployment of energy conservation measures and solar energy is absolutely critical to the future of our country and our planet, and that's why I'm turning a lot of my energy toward helping businesses and individuals here do that as quickly as possible. We are truly facing a crisis time on this. I mean, if you look at the new IPCC report from the United Nations, we've got a two- or three-degree window that we might fit into. If it goes to the top end, we're cooked. And I think that we must do that. Part of that, then, is multimodal transportation, getting more people to use transit more often, making it more affordable and more accessible to people, getting people out of their cars and then bikes, stopping, slowing down on building parking, and instead of attracting cars, attract more people who use larger forms of transportation. We really need to get there. Beyond those two pieces, basic safety in the city is a key issue for any city, fire and police protection. We need to correct problems that have shown up in the police department and continue to support the reorganization of the fire department, which has made our response better than it was before, and we're really got a high rating, but I think we can continue to improve there.
Before we take one minute to hear closing statements, I'd like to ask, start with Gwen Whistler. Who do you lean on for advice and guidance?
Can I give a lot of answers, or do you just want one, one somebody? Well, I really have had, I really have had the opportunity during this race to meet an awful lot of people here in Asheville, and I've reached out to, I've reached out to people that I hope are, well, that are experts in whatever issue that comes up. So, I leaned on a lot of people. There are a lot of them are in the room. And then I probably lean on my husband a lot to give me input as to, you know, like what the citizens of Asheville just want and want to make Asheville a more pleasant place to live.
Let's just move down to Jonathan.
Several years ago, it occurred to me that one of the things that's lacking in our culture in America is the involvement with what I call tribal elders, that we don't have a cohesive community family, that we've become more compartmentalized and in a very individualized society. So, I've been looking, especially lately through this council race, to my tribal elders, and many of them are in the room tonight, and they're really not all that old. And without a doubt, the strongest post that I have to lean on is the lovely redhead right over here, my wife, Keen Wayne Scott, who I am blessed to have here tonight, and thank you.
It's a good question, David. At a personal level, I certainly lean on my wife, Rachel, and my friends, and so many of them are so involved in the community, and I can always count on them to give it to me straight. For things like trying to figure out how to make Asheville a more food-secure community, I reached out to hundreds of people across the community, people who are experts in poverty or public health or local commerce or land use, to help to try to figure out how do we best address this problem. For affordable housing, we're reaching out to the experts in those areas. Finding those folks who have the most knowledge and seeking the guidance from them is really important. I also reach out and get a lot of guidance via social media. I've been one of the most accessible out there council members in the history of the body, so on Twitter and Facebook and Instagram and other social media, always trying to keep my finger on the pulse of those communities that are involved there, too. And lastly, I'd say my other fellow council members, who are all taking their jobs very seriously and are looking to make Asheville the best place it can be.
I don't know if this is a strength or a weakness, but anybody that knows me knows I have a difficult time asking for people to ask for help. I just, I don't. I don't ask for help. But when I, when I want an honest opinion of someone, I usually go to people who disagree with me, and I bounce things off of them. Usually, they'll give you an honest answer whether you agree with them or not. But as far as, it's depending on, I've got, my entire family lives here in the Asheville area, and so I hate asking, again, for any help from anyone, but when I ask for help, I ask my parents and I ask my friends, and of course, I'm engaged, so I ask my fiancee, and she's usually the one who gives the permission.
At the macro level, Neil Chomsky, Paul Krugman, Robert Reich, that would be a good start. At the local level, I've been amazed at the feedback from people. I didn't realize how many emails would get written to council members. Sometimes when there's big issues, we literally get hundreds a day, and I do read every email that comes to me on an issue, and I respond. If you send me a carbon copy of one that's going around, I will send you a carbon copy of a response. But I do listen. I do try to hear from the people, and I think that's really important, because we're elected as representatives of the community. I also reach out to community groups as much as possible. As I was talking about that civil liberties thing that I've been working away on for almost four years now, there was an interfaith group that included representatives of churches across the city, synagogue and imam from a mosque. Then there were people from different ethnic communities, particularly including Oestro Centro and the Latino community, talking to them about their problems.
Let's wrap this up with one-minute statement from Gwen Whistler, and we'll just run down the row after Gwen Whistler. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed it. I hope that you learned a little bit more about us. I would ask for your vote. Remember that I'm going to be the last on your ballot, but I hope that I'm your first vote.
Thank you all for coming today and bringing your questions and listening to my thoughts on how to move Asheville forward. We're vexed with having a high cost of living and an aging infrastructure that bears more attention than we can fund through taxation. Rising property values do indeed add a certain amount of wealth to the community, but they also increase the cost of housing and commercial activity. The rising tide of growth in our town has only served to raise the lifeboats to a higher level, but the passengers are still lacking basic needs. My plan to increase our community's wealth by creative growth and enterprise revenue, evaluating, or elevating, excuse me, the quality of our school system to an unprecedented level in the region, and making Asheville a more attractive place to bring businesses by investing in its core rather than risking financial resources. Funding businesses that promise jobs but cannot guarantee success is the most fiscally responsible path. At the same time, our potential to gain wealth through smart use of our natural resources can reap great rewards for our community while being good stewards of the environment at large and the quality of life at the most important level, your home. I offer innovation, candor, empathy, and humility-- I offer innovation, candor, empathy, and humility to add to the leadership of our town.
Thank you very much. Gordon Smith, please.
Thanks to the League and for all of you who came out tonight. Asheville was recently named one of the top 10 most charitable communities in the nation. Over a third of our citizens have been out there volunteering to help one group or another, and that's something that makes it a real honor to be able to serve this community. I feel like I get to be a public servant in a community of people who are working to serve one another to make this the best place it can be. I want to help grow Asheville's middle class, to be able to grow those living wage jobs, have more affordable housing, more affordable transportation, more access to healthy and affordable food. I need your help to do that. I would appreciate your vote. If you'd like to come out and help us campus or phone back, Mr. Parker Sloan can point you in the right direction. He's waving his hand right now. And I thank you all for being here. Thank you very much.
Mike Laney, please.
First of all, I want to thank the League, and I want to thank everybody coming out. I know people are busy, and for them, this large of a crowd to come out, I appreciate it personally. Since I grew up in Asheville, I'm a native, and I spent 30 years enforcing the civil rights and protecting people's rights and served this city for 30 years, and I would really like to continue serving in the local city council in that capacity. But there's a lot of issues dealing with the city, and I'm here, that's the reason I got involved. And I don't know everything, and I'm going to rely on people out there, because I'm not afraid to ask the question. If I don't know anything, I will ask you, and I know you'll give me an honest opinion. Thank you very much.
I've had a really great time being on council these four years. It's been a tremendous group of people to work with, and I think we've got a pretty good city staff. I mean, any 1,000-member organization, they're going to be weak links, there's no doubt, but I think it's really an amazing group of people to work with. And so I'd like to try it again for four more years. I've lived here in Buncombe County for 33 years now. That's over half my life. On October 16th is my 63rd birthday. I'm having a big party to show you that I'm not always grim. It's going to be at the Grey Eagle. We've got BJ Liederman, David Lamott, and Marshall Ballou are going to be there. We remember him from the Radiation Blues Band around here. So we're going to have a good time. And I've been particularly grim about the global climate situation lately, because I've read the newest IPCC report, and it is really, really pretty dire. But I've also been working on other issues here. I've enjoyed working with CICE on the energy issues, on replacing our street lights, saving us $365,000 a year in electric bills, rolling out these big blue bins that have increased our recycling by about 100% in a year. You know, we're making real changes here. Thank you.
We had many great questions that we didn't get to, obviously. Lots of questions I would have liked to ask, and many of your questions may not have gotten to them. I apologize for that. Thanks very much to the League of Women Voters for asking me to serve as a moderator. Also, thanks to the cosponsors of tonight's forum, the Chamber of Commerce, Mountain Express, Carolina Public Press, the Oshir Life Online Learning Institute here, and to Asheville FM NewsHour and AshvilleFM.org for live streaming of this. The candidates will be at their tables outside this room if you want to ask them direct questions, and there are a lot of questions that we didn't get to. Thank you very much for coming.
This has been the 2013 Asheville City Council Candidates Forum, presented by the Asheville-Buncombe League of Women Voters, with video coverage provided by the North Carolina--